Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the November 17, 2020 meeting of the Exeter Region Cooperative School Board. I'd like to begin the meeting by opening with introductions. My name is Helen Joyce. I'm Chair of the Board. Travis?
Good evening, everybody. Travis Thompson from Stratum, the Vice Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Kim will be joining us in a moment. Kim Meyer from Exeter. Paul?
Paul Bauer from Newfields.
Thank you. Melissa?
Melissa Letchfield-Brettwood.
Thank you. Dave? Dave, you're muted. Dave Slifka is from Exeter. Bob?
Good evening, Bob Hall from Kensington.
Thank you. Kathy?
Good evening. Kathy McNeil from East Kingston.
Thank you so much. Our colleague Maggie Bishop from Exeter is not with us this evening. Our administrative team. David?
I'm Dr. Ryan, Superintendent Schools.
Thank you. Molly?
Molly O'Keefe, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Michelle?
Michelle Voto, Director of Exeter Adult Education.
Thank you. Rusty?
Rusty Lister, Director of Facilities.
Thank you. Mike?
Mike Monahan, Principal at Exeter High School.
Thank you. Patty?
Patty Wands, Principal of Cooperative Middle School.
Thank you. Sharon? Sharon, you're muted.
Sorry. Sharon Wilson, luckiest principal in the world, Principal at SST.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Michelle?
Michelle Larson, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I meant Michelle Voto. Thank you, Michelle, for introducing yourself there. Great.
I can do it again. Exeter Adult Education.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you introduce yourself before? You know what? I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to specify which, Michelle, I'm talking about. My apologies, ladies.
Not to confuse us with Bob Hall, AKA.
There we go. All right. I think we're good to go. Have I left anyone out? I think the late hour is getting to me. Have I left anyone out? I think we're all set. Thank you so much. We'll begin with public input. Dr. Ryan, have you received any public input with regard to tonight's meeting?
We have received several emails and letters, but that was for our special meeting. We've not received any questions for this evening.
Thank you so much. Just so the public will know, those of us who, those who are joining us this evening, we will wait until the end of the meeting to open the chat box as we normally would with public input at the end of the meeting, but only for comments and not any questions. So tonight, as presentations are being made, I would ask the public, if you have questions, especially as they relate to back-to-school issues, to please send those questions directly to our building principals or to Dr. Ryan. All right. We'll begin with the approval. Yes, Michelle. Melissa?
Sorry, Helen. I quickly, I received a public input this afternoon. Is it okay if I share it quick? It's just a comment.
Sure.
It was from, okay, thank you so much. It was from Liz Free in Brettwood, and it was regarding the draft budget. I believe it was on the web, either on the website or Molly had sent it to her, but it's in a different format now than it had been previously, and the request had been made if there's any way that we could go back to the old format, and I had said that I would pass that along to the board.
Thank you. And we can talk about that, too, as the BAC is presenting, but thank you. That's great. Appreciate that. All right. The minutes for October 20, 2020, public minutes, if you folks have had an opportunity to read through them, are there any corrections or omissions on those?
I do.
Melissa? Yes?
Okay, so, you know, on the very first page of the October 20 minutes, where it says under announcements that Dr. Ryan said the SAU is doing its best to avoid unnecessary legal fees, it just seems awkward the way it's there. Was that, David, was that prompted by an email or a question or a public comment, though? Are we missing something there?
No, one of this, it was specifically, it's in the text, the chat text, which we post with our meetings where we permit chat questions. One of the questions that we received, actually, this, I take this back, this was an emailed question in that we responded to, somebody had asked us about avoiding unnecessary legal fees. There were some other questions that were tied in with it. So it was just a response to that.
Should we point that it was a response to an email, do you think?
Yeah, it's definitely in the video, for certain, because I had to provide context for it. It sounds like it just didn't make it to the minutes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Any other corrections or omissions? All right, seen then, none. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll make that motion. Oops.
Okay. Kathy has made the motion, and Melissa, would you like to second that?
Yes, please, but could the motion be as amended, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Absolutely, of course. Thank you. All right. So the motion is to accept the minutes as amended. We'll do a roll call, given the fact that we're on Zoom. Travis?
Hi.
Thank you. Kim?
Hi.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hey, I was just kidding when I said we're all set. Can I add one more thing, please?
The motion's on, the motion's on the floor, Melissa. It's, okay, so we're in a vote now.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna vote no. They called Maggie Bishop a he in the minutes on page eight.
All right, thank you. Dave?
Hi.
Thank you. Bob?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
And I am an I, and Maggie is not with us this evening, so thank you very much. Sorry, Melissa, once we took the vote, we had to move forward. My apologies. All right. Thanks.
Point of order, Helen?
Yes, sir.
The non-public minutes from that meeting are sealed, and therefore, they will be here at the SAU office for Board members to review prior to our next meeting for a vote. Because of the remote situation, we're not able to share those. Typically, we
Of course.
we have to queue in a physical meeting, and then we have them returned. So that was the easiest way for us to be able to provide those.
Thank you for that, because that was my next question. So you read my mind. Thank you so much. All right. Great. All right. Superintendent's report. Dr. Ryan, would you like to report out for us?
I am going to be, actually, I'm gonna forego my superintendent's report, other than we've been planning pretty heartily on, first of all, the winter athletic season, return to school, and preparing seven budgets. We're now beginning to present those budgets to all of our boards. The cooperative will be presenting that tonight. Molly O'Keefe will be doing the honor. We had successfully worked with our Budget Advisory Committee, thanks to all of the nine members of the Budget Advisory Committee for helping us shape that budget. I also want to thank Paul Bauer and Dave Slifka for volunteering some time to go through that budget as well, help us connect, stay connected with the Cooperative School Board. Just lots going on. We spent a lot of time in our elementary schools in the last couple of weeks, having our students return. We're in Week Two. It's going very, very well. Naturally, we're chasing COVID cases as they arise. We're up to 21 total cases since the beginning of the school year, and we continue to work through those and work our way through these changing health conditions. And with that, given the hour and how late our first meeting ran, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Ryan. Any questions for Dr. Ryan? All right. I'm gonna piggyback on, I'm gonna piggyback on that, Dr. Ryan, in terms of my Chair's report with regard to our superintendent evaluation meeting. I'm gonna save that for December, if you have no objection to that.
None whatsoever.
Thank you. All right. So we now will move to Mr. Monahan, high school report, sir.
Um, I don't know, Dave, do you want to talk about return to school here?
Yeah, I think this would be a good spot for us to bring up, you know, some, some changes that we're gonna propose.
Sure. Um, so we talked a little bit about, and we sent that out to the, to the public about, you know, stepping some days back for our return to school, but Dr. Ryan certainly, you know, chime in here, is what we've talked about, looking at, going, I think, maybe moving back towards our original date for returning to school. I did have a, I did want to share some of the feedback I've gotten from many of my staff members, a little concerned about moving things back a couple of weeks in terms of their feelings about wrapping things up, and some of the concerns they've heard from kids as well. But certainly, we're looking at getting after the holidays. Dr. Ryan, do you want to speak to that at the very least, and maybe move back towards December, January 19?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So I think we have two date issues that we want to consider. We just heard testimony from Dr. Johnson earlier regarding the rise in numbers, the information I've received from the Public Health Network here in the Seacoast, Stafford County, as well as working with, with Dr. Johnson. I've received a lot of messages. I know, Helen, you've received messages from parents regarding December 22nd, 23rd, having our seniors come back prior to the Christmas break. There's a lot of concern around having students who have been isolated from each other predominantly gather or congregate back into a setting like a high school for a day just prior to the holiday break, where they're going to go off and see family, as being concerning, given what's happening with the rise in the positive test cases. And so we talked through that, and we felt it'd be prudent to move those in-person orientation days to after the Christmas holiday break. The more we're talking about it, this board asked, or this board approved a motion to have the high school return on January 19 and the middle school return on December 7. We were able to work with both schools, and at the middle school, they were able to work their schedule and create an earlier return to November 30, and we're still on track, barring any, any type of drastic rise from where we are now in our, in our positive cases. We're still on track for a November 30 return. With regard to, and Ms. Wands will talk a little bit about the, the daily schedule and how we have to adjust that to accommodate transportation, but I'll let her speak to that in her report, and we'll get there. Mr. Monahan and I have been working, and we're looking at, after the holiday season, that with the board approving the January 19, we were hoping to enter a discussion tonight where we had talked about and put out to our parents and talked with this board about getting it to January 4, because the board had asked us to move it as early as possible. However, there seems to be a rising concern, a raised, rising concern from not just our, our staff members, but our families, and I received more emails today from our families who had already made plans to travel during that Christmas time, knowing that when they returned, they were going to be quarantined for two more weeks anyway, because the start date had originally been scheduled for January 19. And so I was hoping that we could have the conversation tonight, that the recommendation going into January may very well be to return it to that January 19. We were hoping to engage the board in this conversation with Mr. Monahan and myself.
Could I ask a question, David? I understand the logic there. Totally understand it. My question would be, if, if we were talking about returning the high school kids to January 19, what about the kids at the middle school? Normally, they would be coming back on January 4. So how would you correlate that?
It's not a conversation that I had had with, with Patty. I, I think that the concern that's coming from the high school was not just the combination of families who are gonna be traveling, because that's a concern for all of our families.
Right.
Who have, who have given up or made a sacrifice already to not travel, so they could be back in school on January 4. But there's certainly some concern on behalf of families and teachers starting the second semester two weeks earlier, which then limits the first semester by an additional two weeks, having already started two weeks later, and so having essentially an entire month taken off of that first semester. So this was a combination. I had not engaged in conversation regarding the middle school families yet with having a return on January 4, or even our elementary school families. What I do know is that area districts, and I'm not advocating for this, but area districts, the larger districts, Pinkerton, I know Manchester will be moving remotely from Thanksgiving through the Martin Luther King Holiday. Again, I'm not advocating for that. I think what we were looking at was for the high school, having originally approved a January 19 start date, I think families made some, some plans, our teachers planned for the rest of the semester, and then when we started backing up to January 4, that was based on the board's wish that we could move it earlier, and now we're looking at that in hindsight, saying that may not be the best move on our part.
I appreciate all of that. I really do. My concern is that we've notified parents and students that they're coming back on January 4, and now we're switching it back again. I totally get where you're all coming from with regard to that, but I am a little concerned about the fact that now we've sent out a mixed message to them. It's, it's kind of a back and forth. So I just throw that out to you as a concern that I have for the families. Any other comment from board members? Dave?
Helen, I agree, too. I mean, now, so Dave, we, we voted on it. It didn't pass. The, the Paul one, where we suggested in December. The one, the motion that passed was going back to January 19, correct?
Yes, the motion that you passed was January 19 with the caveat of, can you try and, and get it earlier? We wouldn't stop trying to get it earlier.
Okay, so there's no vote. So you're pretty much informing us now that you feel that we need to go back, stay to what we vote, the vote passed at the 19th? Is that what we're doing now, or? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm just bringing up the concerns that have arisen over the last week, not just from staff members, but certainly from families. I just wanted to be able to have a public conversation about it, so that we can, we can reach a final conclusion, given that we're in such a fluid situation, Dave.
So the conclusion is, I mean, as vote, as members, we're not voting again. You're just telling us, okay, we're gonna shift back to where we originally, the vote went, correct? I'm just curious right now. I mean, are we gonna get into a debate? But if we're not, because it's not gonna change anyways, then it's all I'm asking.
No, it's just a, it's a conversation for board members. We're looking for input. We're looking for suggestion. We're looking for comments, because if the board feels strongly that we really ought to remain on January 4, then we would begin with the in-person orientation on January 4 and January 5, and then move forward from there, because that's what we had talked about after we realized we really shouldn't have our students congregating in the school on the 22nd and the 23rd. Those would become the teacher classroom preparation days, preparation for the return after Christmas.
Okay, so, all right, so.
Trying to have an open conversation about it.
We're just trying to figure out which way to go, Dave.
All right. I mean, I agree with Helen. We did tell one thing, but again, it's out there about traveling for Thanksgiving and the other, the other holidays, you know, going forward. I mean, as, as parents and as people, you know, we all have to make sacrifices. I just, now, the shift again and shifting back again, and plus, now we just voted for winter sports to start, so that's gonna be an impact, too. So now the students are gonna be, you know, at the high school, now they have to, it would've been easier if they're in there, but now they're not. So I, I just think it's, I don't know. It's, it's causing more, I think it's kind of causing kind of chaos. That's my opinion.
Thanks, David. Kathy? Kathy, you're muted.
So I guess I'm gonna go the opposite, where I think giving them to the 17th makes more sense. I worry about people traveling during the holidays and what they can bring back, and I like the idea of quarantining till the 17th.
19th, Kathy.
19th, 19th, right, because Saturday's Friday. So yeah, that's, that would be my, I mean, as a parent, if you're, you're planning on traveling and you've made those plans around the holidays, I think giving them the quarantine time is the best. So, all right, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yep.
Any other comments at all? Travis?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't see this as going back and forth at all. I mean, the original date that was approved on was the 19th. I mean, we always want to try to get the students back as early as possible, and, and, you know, Dr. Ryan and the administrative team has always been looking to try to get the students back in as quickly as we can, but the reality of the situation is that things are getting worse, not better, and to try to force that issue and get them into the schools, you know, for, for one day prior to the holiday. I mean, I've had a lot of parents express to me that, that, quite frankly, that's just silly. I mean, to get them into the school for a day before they're all gonna go spend time with their families to try to get them back, really, and again, this is not criticism, Dr. Ryan was trying to do what, you know, we sort of asked him to try to do, but, you know, the, the way things are going right now, it makes the most sense to stick with the original plan that the administrators put together, and, and all of us as parents, you know, me being one of them, have to be flexible. I mean, things are going to change, and if things change again in late January, if things change again in February or March, we're gonna have to roll with, roll with the punches and do the best we can. So, I mean, I think it was optimistic to try to get back prior to the holidays. I think we all wish they were back right now, but the reality is that that's just not gonna work. So I think Dr. Ryan's approach is, is prudent, and is the, you know, what we should be focused on, getting back as soon as we can after the holiday break.
Thank you, Travis. Bob, did you have something you wanted to say?
I'll just agree. I'm gonna agree with Travis, exactly how I feel.
Thank you. Melissa?
Hi. So I just wanted to say that I can understand where absolutely everyone is coming from, and David, this, the, I say the original plan, I don't, we've had so many, but the one where you talked about bringing the kids back in for the orientation prior to Christmas break, I was puzzled by it, but yet I thought it was kind of neat, because it was nice that, it was something for the kids to look forward to right before the holidays. So I actually applaud you for, for trying to figure that out. I absolutely agree with you that probably it's best to have the orientation on January 4, but regarding the fact that families might be traveling and they may need to quarantine, my personal feeling is I just don't think that it's fair that, I don't know how to, how to put it, but that the entire population should be penalized for that. There are travel advisories all over the place, all over the nation. They're telling us not to even congregate, you know, with our neighbors during Thanksgiving, and if people have chosen to travel, it's the state's rules, right, and recommendations that they need to quarantine. We're not putting that out there. So in my opinion, I would love to see you go with the 4. I just, I don't think it's great for optics if we're gonna flip-flop. The kids are excited. They want to be back in school. If we're up to me, I would support, let's go with the January 4th and 5th, I believe, for the orientation. Start school at that point. If families choose to travel, that is a personal decision at their own risk, and that's the rule, so they'll just need to quarantine.
Thanks, Melissa. Just to kind of piggyback, and then Dave and Kathy have something to say. I honestly, honestly have no issue with regard to the idea about people traveling and waiting. My main concern is twofold. Number one, that we've notified parents now that they're going to be going back on the 4. So I'm curious as to whether parents opted not to travel because of that. You see what I'm saying? You know, I don't know how many messages you got from parents who said, we've made plans to travel, and I get that, and I'm all for safety as well, but you might now, if we change it back, have parents say, wait a minute, we were going to travel and we chose not to because of the message that we got from you. So I only, again, I'm fine with either one, but I just wanted you to be prepared that we may take some criticism because of the fact that we notify parents, and they may have made plans based on that contingency. Okay? Thank you. Kathy?
Okay, so there's, there was more to that, too, than we're bringing up, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so for them going back, the school's not really ready for them to go back because of the, the way that the semesters are set up, and it would be better for them to go back on the original date that we had voted on. Am I correct on that? Somebody answer that?
To a certain degree, yeah. And, you know, amongst some of the staff and, and feedback from the staff and kids, yeah.
Okay, so that's also the other piece of that. It's not just about the holidays. It's about giving the school the time to prep and be totally ready for them to come back, which is more what I'm concerned about as well, that the school's ready and that everybody there is, is on board with going back on the original date that we voted on. So that's why, that's the other part, piece of this, that I think we all need to pay attention to, is that the school will be ready at that point. They're not ready now, and it's not best interest of the kids for now. So that's my piece.
Thank you. Dave, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, just, I mean, one quick comment. I mean, I have two children, and I know a lot of people have children. All the other schools in the SAU are mostly back. CMS will be the 30th. So our high school students are the only ones that aren't back. I mean, unless, sure, there are single students out there, single kids out there, but most part, most families have kids in different schools, yet they're back and they're managing it. I just don't understand how we feel that that's okay for them, but now our high school students can't, and we're kind of putting on the whole travel thing. I mean, I don't know, I'm just, every other school's back, but the high school, it's just kind of frustrating, because there is kids in, you know, I have a kid here in middle school, I got a kid in, you know, elementary school, I got a kid in high school, I got three, you know, and now it's shifted. It just, I'm frustrated, so.
I, you know, I'll just make one final comment, and then we, we will leave it to the administration to make that decision. And, you know, I'm kind of trying to piece everything together here, and my concern, when the plan was sent out to the parents last weekend to come back on the 4, it would have been clear to the administration that the semester was being shortened by two weeks. If that was a concern, and I'm not saying that it's not, but if it was a concern, we should have left things then as it was, and not notify parents that the kids are coming back on the 4, and Dave makes a valid point here. You have middle school kids, elementary school kids, high school kids, all in the same family. So are we going to tell the middle school and elementary school members of those families, it's safe for you to go back on the 4 if we travel, but not our high school student? I just throw that out there, just for your consideration, and I, you know, whatever decision is made, you know, fine, but I think you need to kind of pull all of that in when you're making your final determination.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Two, two items I'd like to address with regard to all of this. As one, we've, we've been under a tremendous amount of pressure, both politically, from members of this board, as well as members of the community, who have no problem contacting the Commissioner of Education, the Governor, Senator Shaheen's office, to force us essentially to put students back into school buildings earlier. So we've done everything that we can to try and safely accomplish that, given the level of pressure that we've been under, and to try and safeguard families at the same time. So as we continue to work through something that we've never worked through before, and recognize that at times, and recognize that at times it appears as though our employment might be jeopardized by not moving forward with some of the wishes of members of the public or uh, in in the political realm, it becomes extremely difficult to try and find the most balanced decision that we can. And at the end of the day, we continue to try to do what is best for our students, even though that's not gonna be a popular decision for people who want to apply that pressure. That's number one. Number two, you know, we really believe that we're doing the best we can. I know that Mike is up nights trying to figure out how to get this done. I know that Patty has lost sleep, lots of it, to try and get this done. And we're 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 working through and we know that plans continue to change. That's not something that we've ever had to uh, to to defend because everybody has been there alongside us saying, yeah, we understand plans are changing, and we're frustrated, and so are we. It it got to the point where uh, two weeks ago, I at least had to run a roster of every section with every student. And I started to go back to my assistant principal days of being a scheduler, and I created matrices of students who had chosen remote and students who had chosen in person to see how we could get students back into classrooms where it wouldn't disrupt their course schedule to see if we could do it earlier. So so I understand where this board's level of frustration is. I understand where this this public's level of frustration is. But we're we're trying and and we know that we're not making friends with any of the decisions that we're making. What we are doing though is what we believe to be the very best for our students. And so we're gonna continue to do that. So we'll naturally, we'll take this feedback, and I appreciate the feedback tonight. And we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll see what we can determine in terms of either a January four or January nineteen. But I I really think that that we need to listen to our staff. I think we need to listen to more of our families and make a more educated decision as we get closer to that break. We do still have some time. And so I'll I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Travis?
Thank you, Helen. I appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Ryan. Uh, and I guess just to to let the public know and and all of us already know this on the board, but but quite frankly, uh, you know, I do think Dr. Ryan and the team is doing what everybody thinks is in the best interest of our students. Uh, and if anybody isn't sure, with all due respect to the Governor and Commissioner Edelblue and any of our senators, they have zero say in how our district is run. So there should be no pressure coming from them to Dr. Ryan or the administrative team. They have no say in local control. We advocate for local control all the time. And now parents are choosing to go to Commissioner Edelblue and the Governor. I think that's absurd. And they have absolutely nothing to do with the runnings of this district.
Thanks, Travis. Kathy?
And I'm gonna say this once again that I've said before, we hire people to run our schools to do the job that they feel is best for our kids. And I think that we need to trust in both Dr. Ryan and our principals to do what the what is best. They originally wanted the dates that they set forward to begin with. And we asked for them to work on it. I I think we should have always just left it alone and let them do what they think is best, the way they they think it would be best for our kids. And to pressure them to try to do it for the fourth because of what people will say or I really think that they're doing what they need to do for our kids to move forward the way they should, the safest way and the way that the schedules will flow. And if we all listen to them the way they presented it at the beginning, we wouldn't be in this mess.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, I'll make one one response to that. Kathy, no one is arguing that. Absolutely not. We, I respect Mike, I respect Dave and Patty, Sharon, I respect all of them. My issue is with the communications piece, and that's all there is to that. It's the communications piece that I have an issue with. But let's let's move on. Mis- um, Melissa?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So just to respond to that, I understand what you're saying about the communication, and I agree with you.
Right.
But I think what they were doing, if you, if we can hear them, is what they were saying. They were trying to do what we asked them to do.
Right, I understand.
And so when you're trying to put pieces together and you think it will work, and then you realize it's not gonna work, yes, that's a frustration, but that's a frustration for them as well.
Right, I understand that.
Right, but I mean, I'm just trying to say that let's, okay, let's just let it go.
Thank you. Kim?
Oh, wait, me?
Kim, did you want to say something? You had your hand raised?
Um, I'm I'm good, Helen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, and then we're gonna move on.
Um, I just, I just wanted to throw this out there. I know nobody likes this word at this point, but can we just do a survey? Can we just put out a survey, just simply asking those parents, the high school parents, which date they prefer, the fourth, or I don't remember at this point, the nineteenth? And let's just go with the majority. I just think that's the fair thing to do at this point.
Thank you. Kim?
Helen, I I will say something. Thank you. Um, so I, you know, this is really, as we all know, extremely challenging. Um, there's nothing easy about any of these decisions and the logistics that have to be made. You know, because we have local control, our administrators have spent hours and hours and days and weeks trying to figure out how to do this the best way, you know, becoming epidemiologists, basically, essentially, and logistics tacticians. Um, you know, whereas other states, you look next door to Maine, you know, the Principals Association, you know, made these decisions. And and I I respect New Hampshire. I love our state, our state. I love our local control mentality. But we just need to recognize that district by district, these folks have had to spend countless hours doing things that we never really imagined we'd ask of them. So I, you know, hats off to to trying to appease, you know, so many people. And and I, you know, respectfully, hey, I'm a parent too, and and I've read all those emails from students who who want sports. But that's not how we need to make decisions. We have to make decisions based on the operations and um, what's best logistically, uh, what's in the best interest of our students. And I I want to leave that to the experts because the state certainly has. The state has not given us any guidance. And we're just lucky to be in a district that we have um, well-prepared folks who are able to do this. I feel badly for other districts that don't have uh, the number of PhD folks we have in our central office because um, it's it it's it's not being done equally across the state. So hats off to our administration for doing the best job you can despite this being a really tough, challenging circumstance. So thank you.
Thanks, Kim. All right. Are there any other questions for David or Mike relative to back to school? Or Mike, do you have anything else for us?
No, I'm good for now.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you so much. Patty?
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm just gonna go, given the time, uh, right to um, the schedule. So I'll share my screen if that's okay. Uh, you heard um, Dr. Ryan speak to um, uh, we had to accommodate uh, for some transportation needs and some little, some changes and shifts in time. So as a result, we had to build three new schedules. So I'm gonna share the screen. Oops, that's not mine though. Sorry about that. I don't know why. I don't know why, sorry. Why is it going right to my desktop? Usually it goes, let's see. All right, let's try this again. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Um, I just want to go into presenter mode. Okay. Okay, so um, okay, so I'm gonna start with the in-person. So initially, when we shared our schedule, the kids were starting at about eight thirty. Um, but because of uh, transportation with SST and our elementary schools, um, there just aren't enough of buses and drivers. So we had to shift our time. So this shift in our time also shifts remote instruction. So um, students will be coming in about seven twenty-five. They'll walk directly to their um, first period class, and that's where attendance will be taken. And then in the day, they'll have their four academic classes. So what I mean by that is math, science, social studies, English language arts. Uh, one period, um, students will either go to their world language class, or maybe they're in an intervention. So if you take a team, which is a four, like half the team will go to their world language or intervention class, while the other half of the team will stay um, in for the flex period. And flex is where teachers on team um, just support the kids for the distant learning day. But um, I did hear myself say, kids will go to foreign world language. Kids aren't going anywhere. Kids are staying. So one shift and change that we made, just to um, prevent more students walking throughout the building, is that when the kids come in at seven twenty-five, they're gonna stay in their pod area. So there are five classrooms in a pod, and they're gonna stay there the entire time. So when they move classes, they'll just move to four, math, science, social studies, or English language arts. When they have world language, they'll be in a classroom with kids on their team who are also in a Spanish, French, or Latin class. Um, and they're gonna take that class remotely. So this is twofold, where it prevents kids from walking around the building, but it also helps our world language teachers in the sense that, because they see all grade levels, and so therefore they would be seeing all cohorts. So our world language teachers will be in school, but they'll be teaching remotely. And then this also helps because it lines up with our um, the students that are taught uh, for, excuse me, world language. Um, I'm sorry, I was gonna say it lines up with distant learning, but I'm thinking of another class at U S. So never mind that. Um, but anyway, so they'll have, so then they have their flex, so they have their world language or intervention. And then um, a thirty-minute lunch, and lunch will be, again, be in their pod area in a classroom in an assigned seat. And then we'll start to dismiss at one o'clock. You'll notice it has a thirty-minute dismissal. We've never done this before. We don't know how long it's going to take to dismiss about three hundred and forty kids. Um, so we're planning for thirty minutes. Uh, we know that we're gonna stage the buses on academic way. We'll have a couple of buses come in at a time, dismissed by bus. We'll hold all students for pickup, and then when parents come in, um, we'll have parents place their name on their dashboard and individually dismiss students. So we recognize it's gonna take some time. And the reason why we're not dismissing, say, all parent pickups together, it's that concern of congregating, lacking six-foot social distancing. Okay, so that's the in-person. Now, the students who attend in-person, then they have a distant learning day. So the distant learning day, they'll actually have three classes that you'll see here. Those are the white blocks. Um, three scheduled classes remotely at home that are structured. It's direct instruction with the teacher. So one would either be music, or they're in a unified arts. Um, well, or well, or excuse me, or world language. Um, another class is wellness or health, and then again, down the bottom. So there are three um, different classes that a student could be in. Um, then you'll notice the colored blocks, they're in, there's a hundred and twenty minutes total, so they're forty-minute blocks. So what we're gonna be sharing with students and families is that students shouldn't be spending more than thirty minutes on their math, science, ELA, and social studies. So if you add up those four courses times forty minutes, um, excuse me, thirty minutes, that's a hundred and twenty minutes. So um, just taking those chunks of time, giving the kids breaks in between, but it gives them a full day of learning. And then lastly, the remote schedule has changed, just really in the start and stop time. So initially, the kids are starting, um, I think homeroom is at eight fifteen, so now it's seven thirty, excuse me, seven twenty-five. And again, they still have their four core classes. They have a check-in, checkout. They still have um, a more of an A, B days type schedule between music, unified arts, world language, health and wellness. Um, and they still have that five days a week. And screen breaks in between. And that's it.
Thanks, Patty. Great job. Are there questions from the board for Patty regarding her presentation? All right, we, yes, Paul, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Helen. Um, I just wanted to quickly thank Patty and her team for for really doing an excellent job of thinking creatively around this, uh, particularly the idea of doing the world language, you know, teaching, teaching it remotely, even though the teachers are in the building, I I think is important and smart, you know, to to make contact, contact tracing possible. In the event we need to do that, you know, having a teacher jump across pods would create a real problem. Um, I also really like the the idea of on those distance learning days, having several courses that that the students are getting live instruction, so they're having touch-ins with the school even on those days. So well done.
Thanks. Um, just a, uh, just a couple of notes in case you get feedback. Um, the students, all of the students will have all new schedules. They will be on team. So this has allowed us to keep kids on their team, whether they're um, remote learners or in-person learners. But there could very well be some changes in who their math teacher is because math is um, levelized. But they're on their team. So we thought that was a good compromise.
Thanks, Patty. Any other questions?
Yeah, and
any other questions for Patty? Did you have something else? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I just wanted to share one bit of good news, and we just found this out today. But um, our world language teacher, Spanish teacher, Marjorie Pym, uh, was just announced today that she um, is the twenty twenty-one New Hampshire World Language Teacher of the Year.
Wow.
Uh, the New Hampshire Association of World Language Teachers. So I just wanted to share that. So she'll be honored in the spring at the edis.
Great job. Please extend our congratulations to her. Thank you. All right. All right, we'll move on to Sharon Wilson from SST.
Okay, so um, you know, this is a great meeting because I actually get two chances to talk about the school um, tonight, uh, while here, and then a little bit during the budget presentation. And, you know, somebody asked me two weeks ago, um, when was the last time you cried? And I said, I have no idea, but I know it was when I was talking about my school. Um, we've been in school since September tenth. Um, it feels a lot longer. Um, it's been really hard. Um, it's been really exciting and gratifying. Um, every day we get better. Every day we learn more. Every day we meet more challenges. Um, and I don't say this um, to take like a woe is us attitude, but I say this because it cannot be said enough how absolutely incredible my staff is. The teachers, my admin assistants, the TAs, the unsung heroes, um, our our nurse, Rusty and his crew, who really are just part of our family as well. Um, I mean, everybody. Um, you know, people go above and beyond repeatedly, constantly. And um, it can't be said enough, and it can't be said um, loud enough. Um, how fortunate our students are, how fortunate our families are, and how very blessed SAU sixteen is to have these people. And they are incredible, each and every one. So um, we're finding a lot of things we can't do. Um, we can't have guest speakers, animal and plant couldn't, you know, they can't do a lot of their competitions. The Big E, the Deerfield Fair, um, their off-campus leadership um, day, which is the most inspirational day I've ever witnessed. Um, our culinary department can't have um, after-school events. Um, can't do the pie sale because if we got a number, they would shut down and they would lose a lot of money because they would have already bought all those supplies. And as numbers keep increasing, we find more and more kids wanting to go remote. Um, we started off about ten percent. We're probably about twenty percent now. I'm very happy that, or not happy. Um, I'm very fortunate- I'm very fortunate. My staff is not traveling over Thanksgiving break, so I do expect to return with all programs in person, barring any COVID incident in between. Over the winter break, Christmas break holiday, I will have some staff traveling, which I'm happy for them. I think now more than ever, they need to take time for themselves and to do whatever fills their soul. And so I think we'll have probably two or three programs that will come back, and they will be remote because of staffing. But as I said, we're learning new things. Instead of having the guest speakers, we're having some virtual speakers. And I know the senior leadership team is coming down and speaking in our Careers in Education class, you know, on different days, so that's a fantastic experience. I think not just for our students, but also, I think, for the senior leadership team, who, you know, don't get to see near enough kids and, you know, are, you know, on all cylinders all the time. Our FFA leadership and the amazing Anna Marco, she's been able to hold some activities outside on our property with masks and being able to social distance. And our chef was conscious of the fact that people were disappointed that we couldn't do the pies, that we couldn't purchase all her pies. You know, now we have to cook on Thanksgiving in addition to everything else. So, and she realizes that, you know, we're afraid. We, it's a big school for the amount of people, and we don't get to see each other enough. So Monday and Tuesday, we're going to pay for our supplies, and a bunch of us are going to make pies during lunchtime, so looking forward to that. And FFA took a chance that we would be open still in December. They believed, and they ordered some of the supplies for the wreaths. So some of the very lucky people got in on those one hundred wreaths orders, and they will have gorgeous wreaths to deck their house. So we're adjusting, we're adapting, we're persevering. And Friday, we're going to be doing our Career and College Fair virtually. And it's an amazing endeavor put together by our brand-new work-based learning coordinator. So we're plodding along.
Thank you, Sharon. Great job, and thank your staff as well. I know it's not easy, what you've been dealing with, with some cases coming in, but being able to work around those have been, has been amazing. We thank you so much. Are there any questions for Sharon? All right then. And last but not least, Michelle Voto, not Michelle Larson, who will report on our agility, and we're glad to see you with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Yeah, so it's been business as usual. We started classes on Monday, September fourteenth. Our program has been almost a hybrid model. We have some classes running on campus that started live on the fourteenth, and we have some classes that are running remotely. So that's been going fairly well, and trying to get everybody acclimated to either Zoom or Google Meets. And so that's been going pretty decently. I did want to share with you that Exeter Adult Education, you know, we do survive mostly pretty much on grants, our state grants, but we are actually going after some federal funds. There is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar pot of money that the feds are dishing out that we plan on going after. The feds are actually issuing either, they're issuing six payments. Five one hundred thousand dollar payments and one for two hundred and fifty. So with Dr. Ryan's support, this competitive federal grant, we're actually looking to work on a manufacturing pre-apprenticeship program. So we're really excited with that. And I had a really great, exciting conversation with Cobham last week, and I touched base with them today. So, you know, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that, you know, as we see these monies come available, we are going to actively and proactively go after funds that are going to help not only our adult students and just help our community grow and thrive, so.
Great to hear, Michelle. Thank you so much. Any questions for Michelle? Alrighty. Thanks, administrators. Great job, all of you, as always. Thank you so much. We're going to turn this part of the meeting over on to Molly, presentation of the draft of our twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I think joining you, Molly, will be your Budget Advisory Committee, if I'm correct on that.
Yep, so I will be presenting the budget, and Dave Pendel, is he a panelist?
Great.
I don't see that he's logged in just yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I will search for him. We do have some members of the Budget Advisory Committee listed as attendees. And so if we have any questions, we can always bring members of the Budget Advisory Committee and analysts as well.
Thanks, David.
Okay, so.
All right, Molly.
So tonight, I'll be presenting the draft budget for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. So this budget was reviewed by the Budget Advisor, oops. So this budget was reviewed by the Budget Advisory Committee. And I'd like to publicly thank the members of that committee. So first, we have Dave Pendel out of East Kingston, Lucy Cushman out of Stratum, Rob Delory from Exeter, Roy Marsette from Exeter, Lovey Olaf from Exeter, Lois D. Young from Brentwood, Deborah Bronson from Stratum, Susan Channalara from Newfields, and Jennifer Ramsey from Kensington. And then in addition, Melissa Lischfield served as the Cooperative Board Representative as a non-voting member for the board. So in addition to the Budget Advisory Committee, as David mentioned before, we'd also like to thank the school, two school board members that met with us twice to give us feedback and their thoughts on the budget. So thank you, Paul and Dave Slifka, or Paul Bauer and Dave Slifka. So we met in advance of tonight's meeting to increase the board input in the budgeting process. All meeting minutes of the Budget Advisory Committee meetings and draft budgets presented on those nights are posted, the link that I have listed here, and we'll post this PowerPoint after this meeting tonight. When we reviewed the budget in the Budget Advisory Committee, we reviewed it in the following sections. And the committee unanimously approved the budget nine-zero in the last meeting on November twelfth. So before we get started on the details, I'd like to start by sharing this budget is a proposed two-point-one-three percent increase over the current year budget. And the budget is made up of three sections: the federal funds, the food service, and the general fund. So as Michelle Voto mentioned before, Fed funds are the adult education grants, and the food service is our meal service program. And both of those are self-sustaining programs. The taxpayer cost to operate the schools reside in the general fund. The three largest sections of the general fund are our middle school, high school, and SST. So I'd like to ask the principals to briefly describe their areas to tell us what they're asking for, changes in their budget, what they're looking to keep the same, and even areas where they're looking to decrease. So Mike, if you want to start and tell us a little bit about the high school budget?
Yes, you know, you always look at budgets in terms of wants and needs and balancing this off. And I really think what we come up with is really our needs to continue to give a real quality education to our kids and our families. There are no big asks in the high school budget. We've done a really good job, I think, of looking at areas that potentially needed some increases, but then balancing them off with appropriate decreases in other areas as needed. There are various points in the budget. You'll see things that look like they've gone down a tick and gone up a bit. That's mostly due to some consolidations of lines and combinations of lines that make the budget work a little bit better for us. And again, being able to expend the funds wisely to have the best possible education for our kids. And I'd also highlight, many of our salary lines have gone down, because the folks that have retired have been, you know, obviously very experienced folks, top of the salary schedule. And the hiring we've done is brought in. Lower on the salary schedule teachers, but I would emphasize the hiring we have done, the people we've brought in are outstanding, and we're really pleased to get them, but you'll notice that on those salary lines as well. So I think it's a real thoughtful budget. You know, we put a lot of good time and effort into this, between myself and administrative assistants and all of our learning area leaders and our special ed folks. And again, we really looked at our needs and addressed them, and I think we were really wise in what we did. So again, no big, no big asks, and I think we've presented a real responsible budget.
Patty, can you talk about the middle school?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to start first with the building project and and thanking the voters again, once again, for approving that, and that we are just in really good shape with our building project in terms of, there are some areas that might finish just a little bit ahead of time. If we can find one little bit of a silver lining with the pandemic, it's that we were able to start our cafeteria in October rather than in June of twenty-one. As a result of that, we will be able to open the school in September twenty-one with a full-service cafeteria with a new school schedule, with three lunches instead of six lunches, which of course impacts the whole academic schedule. So we're really excited about that. The only part of the project that will need to be completed is the elevator, and that will be in the fall. But again, we do have one elevator. So it'll be nice when we have the second elevator that's closer to the front door. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, because we're just really pleased with the construction and with Dick Wendell and Rusty Lister and Paul Kent, who's the site supervisor. You know, you just wouldn't even know those, the workers were in our school. Yes, you hear some noise, but it's just been really exciting to see the phases of the project. And I know Paul Bauer visited last week, and it's pretty exciting to see what's going on. So with our budget, like Mike said, we were very, you know, cautious or conscientious to really look at the needs to provide the best programming for our students. As a result, I don't have a lot of big asks. There are two, which are two learning area leader positions. The middle school does not have a learning area leader for our Unified Arts Department, which is made up of many teachers. And we also don't have a learning area leader for our school counselors. And so that's what I'm asking for in the budget. We've been able to find other places in the budget that you'll see may have decreased, and that's just readjusting those lines. And just, we're very responsible this year. One position that is eliminated at the middle school for next year is the finance position. What that will be replaced is really our counselors pushing into the classroom to support social-emotional learning with our students. And we just feel that, given with the pandemic and overall health among us of our children, that this is really an area where our kids need more support and more consistently in all three grade levels. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you, Patty. And Sharon, last but not least, SST.
Okay, so I'm a little disappointed, because I thought this was going to be like the Budget Advisory Committee, where I had to brag about some stuff and show my big, exciting things, so I saved those for now. So can I just have an extra two minutes to do that? Because these are huge things.
Sure, go ahead.
SST is one of four schools in the state that the Krista McAuliffe Center reached out to, to work with them. They have a grant, and we are going to build an exhibit that represents the effects on the body and mind if you were to live on a space station. And this exhibit will travel around the state. It'll spend some time at the Concord State House, and then it'll return to Exeter for in some area. And here's the really cool part. The kids are going to be working on this with educational scientists from NASA. So, yes. In addition, the community, the community college system has a grant and invited us in. We had a meeting with them about developing pre-registered apprenticeship programs, where kids could, you know, even do their third year of CTE. Maybe during their senior year, they may be taking college courses, you know, for high school credit. And when they can graduate with the pre-apprenticeship, they would go in at a higher level and then go in to get to a registered apprenticeship. So, two days after we met, Lint Chocolate wanted to work with us on it. So we already have our first one right now. We're lining up our competencies in four or five of our different programs to align with the curriculum. And this is huge. This is the future of CTE, and it is going to change the lives of so many kids, and I just could not be more thrilled. And lastly, our new work-based learning coordinator has really been partnering a lot of students with jobs. We just did a learn and earn, and we had thirty-nine, no, forty students apply for a two-week position in a local business. And they'll be making, I think it's like sixteen dollars an hour for two weeks. And I think we could only place like ten of them. But in addition to the work, they're also going to be doing some, you know, giving them resume ideas and, you know, interviewing tips and trying to do some of those soft skill life skills that are so important. And the response was overwhelming, and it's an area that, you know, Sarah's only been working at this for two months, and she's already been able to partner a lot of kids with jobs that aren't just, you know, going to get a paycheck, but she's able to link them to their career aspirations, so that they are being able to help support their family. They're, you know, being able to, you know, financially start planning for their future, but you're also getting real job experience. And we had one parent, who, when her daughter got the job, the parents started to cry, and she said, "You didn't just get a job, you're starting your future." So really cool, exciting things. So with that cool stuff having been said, I just wanted to share two things about the SST budget that I'm sure that some people know, but some people don't. And I think it's very important to understand, because this budget operates differently than Exeter High School and CMSs. So in the first place, we're a regional career and technical school, and we have six sending districts total. Obviously, one of them is Exeter. Exeter accounts for fifty percent of our students, but the other the other percent is balanced out by tuition. The other piece to understand is that, in addition to this, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars is allocated to our school for the Perkins Grant, and that's a federal grant. We get an allocation every year. The year before last, it was two-thirty-six, but it has increased by fifteen percent. So there are some things that we can put in the grant, and there are some things that we cannot. There are some things that can stay in the grant, you know, for the duration. There are some things that have to gradually come out. So one of the big, well, one of my asks is in regards to, if you look at the salary line, you would see that it did go down. However, you're also going to see a request for, you know, eighteen or nineteen thousand. We hired the work-based learning coordinator out of the Perkins Fund. It was a new position, and it's a position that's required under the regulations for the new Perkins Five Grant, because the most important indicator for us is work-based learning. And we are supposed to have a career counselor, which we did not. So this position that is solely grant-funded right now is, hits two critical and mandatory areas. is, hits, hits two critical and mandatory areas for us to be in compliance and keep our grant. And so we can, a personnel can only stay in a grant for three years. So I didn't want to take it out all at once in three years. So my recommendation from my perspective was to take out a third each year. And Dr. Ryan agreed with me. And Michelle Larson in the business office actually told me that that's how they did it before for pre-engineering. So that, I think, is a big change that you'll see. The SST instructional aid is not a new position. We just added one more day. She was working four days and we shifted some people around so that we could have her devoted to supporting our special education liaisons so she can work one-on-one with kids, or she pushes into a variety of programs to make sure that we are providing the services that students deserve and need. Extracurricular stipends went down because just like Mr. Monahan, we did right-size and combined some lines. And that's where you will see some, you know, changes that may bring a question here or there. But if you look, they kind of balance out. There used to be two stipend lines before the assistant, before SST had an assistant principal. And so the last two years, been trying to make sure that we calculate out exactly what we need. So we decreased it last year and we're decreasing it again this year. But I do believe that it is exactly where it needs to be. We decreased professional development because the governing board had increased that last year for a specific need, and we have met that. We're decreasing SST contract services by bringing some things in-house. We had some outside speakers, and we're redoing the way that we do enrollment and recruitment. And we're utilizing students and parents more and making it more personal and authentic. The only program that has any type of raise for supplies is Health Science. And that's for two reasons. Last year, we doubled the program by bringing in another teacher, but we used money for someone who had left. So it was a budget-neutral effect on the local budget. But we hadn't put in before for more supplies. So that's where you'll see that. In addition, we also donated a lot of supplies last March and April. And we do need to replenish a bit. Copiers are going down because there was an opportunity presented to us to, that had been costed out by Ashley Lambert and those folks, and we took advantage of it to be as fiscally responsible as possible. The biggest increase you see is 78%. That is for technology. So so much of our technology is paid through our Perkins Grant, GoPros, Promethean boards, you name it. We pay for it through there if we can. Coincidentally, or bad luck, we were told by our tech people that there were three different areas that needed to be added into our budget for a total of $9,550. It didn't want to add that on. So there's 1,700 of it that can go into Perkins. And combining the other two can be spread out. One of them can be spread out over three years, so I'm doing that. And that accounts for that very big change. That is not a new ask. It's just, it's just new needs and end-of-life, end-of-life equipment. However, we will be pursuing E-rates to offset that number. The custodial increase is obviously big. That had been a correction because the custodian, I think, was not applied to us. And Molly can correct me on that. And I think those were my big pieces. And if not, Molly will correct me.
So thank you, Sharon, Mike, and Patty. And so I've also added this pie chart to show us across the cooperative what types of expenses we have. This is the general fund, everybody together. So as you can see, the budget is largely based on obligations and employees' contracts. Now, this is the real deal here, where it maps the FY21 budget, which is our current-year budget, to the FY22 proposed budget. And these are the major differences. So the first is G-Bex. So while they do receive state funding, they have approximately $2,500 to $2,800 of costs not covered per student. And according to the latest roster provided by Peter Stackhouse, there's 65 SAU students that attend G-Bex. So in this proposed budget, we have budgeted for the $2,500 per student rather than the flat $280,000 that we've historically done in the past. The next item is retirement. And as discussed in previous board meetings, New Hampshire Retirement increased their contribution rate for employers. I've noted the change for employees and teachers on this slide, and it's significant. Next is COVID. So we continue to clean the schools, purchase PPE and other supplies to prevent COVID. As there's no end in sight, we've included budget to support the items needed in this pandemic. We're currently seeing costs of approximately $60 per student. However, we feel as we learn more about the pandemic and the demand for products change, we can reduce that to $30 per student next year. We've had some staffing changes. So as Patty mentioned, we plan to eliminate the business education position at CMS, but we also plan to add a DEIJ position. So DEIJ stands for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Justice. This position will service all of SAU 16. And we've put it in the cooperative budget because all towns that will benefit contribute to the cooperative budget. We're entering into the last year of the contract with first students. We've included the contractual increase costs. And the insurance change is based off of the 6.5% GMR, which is your guaranteed maximum rate provided by Health Trust. The salary figures here noted in the change are contractual increases for the administrators and paraprofessionals. Non-union employees are budgeted at a 3% increase over current-year actual salaries. But please remember, this is a negotiation year for teachers, so the teachers' salaries remain constant with current-year salaries. Any change in the collective bargaining agreement will be reflected in a second warrant article. We had planned for technology in the FY22 budget. However, we're looking, we took a look at the current year's projected unreserved fund balance as well as the COVID relief money that we're receiving at $200 per pupil. And this is one of the things we feel very confident that we could use fund balance at the end of this year to purchase rather than including it in the fiscal year '22 budget. So in the financial that was included in your board packet, you're going to see there's about a $4.2 million projected unassigned fund balance at this time for the current year. Now, again, I remind you that we're just starting off the year as the report says at the end of October. So there's still a lot of actuals and a lot of incomparencies to still be built. But we're also seeing about $550,000 coming our way for the COVID relief money. So we felt very confident that we could buy the technology out of fiscal year '21 fund balance rather than budgeting for it next year. And lastly, all other is all other decreases and increases that net off, that do not fit one of the major categories as I've listed above. So with all these changes up and down, we're looking at a $1.361 million increase. This is most, this is mostly, the entire thing is actually the retirement and the insurance change. So we've tried to keep this budget as lean as possible, and we bring to you tonight a 2.13% increase. And that's it.
Thank you, Molly. I'll open it up to questions from the board. Just, just to clarify a couple of things. We are going to be holding on December 8th a board work session as we did last year on the budget, and we'll be going through a line-by-line review. I'm going to ask Molly, if this is feasible, Molly, if you could put together a packet as you did last year for us. You did a great job with that. And if we could get that in advance of that December 8th meeting so that we will have an opportunity to review that on our own before that evening, that would be most helpful. And we'll see if we can figure a way to get it to everybody as opposed to trying to send that via email. But we can talk about that at a later time. I just throw that out there to you. I know that there were, there was one issue that came up from one of our constituents with regard to why, why now it's being put in a general fund as opposed to regular ed, special ed, contracted services? I was wondering if you could address that for us tonight?
Sorry, what was the question? Why is what being put in the general fund?
In other, in other words, you've got, you've got it listed as general fund where some folks are asking about, whereas before it was broken down by regular ed, special ed, et cetera. Has there been a major shift in that, the way it's being presented? I'm just throwing the question out as it was raised by one of our constituents.
Oh, you mean just the format that's being presented?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. No, no, there was no reason we presented it to the Budget Advisory Committee in these different sections. And we reviewed, middle school reviewed, middle school, regular ed, and special education together. And so as we, as we presented in the different sessions of the Budget Advisory Committee, I started building this PowerPoint. So it flowed with the same way that we presented in the Budget Advisory Committee. There is no rationale for changing the, the, the structure. It just is how it was presented best.
Thank you. If you could put, put us back on full screen in case there are other board members who have some questions for you, Molly. Thank you very much. All right, we're back. Hi, everybody. Okay, are there any further questions for Molly? Travis, and then Paul?
Thank you, Helen. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you for all the, the time and effort that went into the creation of all the, the individual budgets and then obviously rolling up to the full budget. Certainly impressed with, with where we ended up, but still have a few questions and concerns about certain things. Given the economic environment that we currently are in and, and most likely will continue to be in for the foreseeable future, I do have a couple of concerns about adding new learning area leaders to the budget at this point in time, not questioning the need at all, Patty, but just not sure if this is the, the time to do something like that. So just food for thought. Again, it's, it's your budget to present, and we'll have further discussions on the 8th, as Helen said, but have some questions there. And then around the DEI position, fully supportive, 100% of that type of position. But again, just looking at the economics is this discussion, not the, not the social impact conversation. That's a different conversation. But just looking at the, the finances, again, not sure that this is the time to be adding a, a full position around something like that. And I do have some questions about where that position would reside, whether that would be an SAU-level position, which again, not saying I wouldn't be supportive of that. I would need to learn more, but just again, food for, for thought as far as that goes. And then my last comment for now, it's never the last comment, but I want to thank Dr. Ryan, Molly, and whoever, Michelle, whoever was instrumental in making the proposed change to the G-Bex funding. As I think we said in the past, I'm much more, or at least I've said in the past, I'm much more comfortable with a formula that we can defend saying we're supporting Exeter students or SU16 students in G-Bex and not just providing them with a flat dollar figure that we can't justify in any way, shape, or form, or at least that I'm not comfortable justifying. I still would have liked to have seen a lot more effort on the part of G-Bex. And I think we asked for that repeatedly throughout the year. And I know, Dr. Ryan, you have let us know that they have not been overly communicative with us, unless that has changed, which certainly defer to you. But at least having a formula that we can justify support our students makes me feel a lot better about whatever money we send to, to G-Bex.
So just so that we can, I want to be, make, make sure that we're very upfront with, with where we are with G-Bexes. The formula was actually Mr. Stackhouse's idea. He came to, we met with Molly about a month ago, Molly. We met with Peter to talk about the budget process. And we asked him to let his board know that we were talking as well. And he actually proposed a $25 to $2,800 per pupil cost for any cooperative student. And so we looked at that, we worked through. We asked him for more information. We received that information, I think it was Thursday or Friday of last week, which was 65 students. We settled on the $2,500 per pupil. Prior to that, we had traded emails in August relative to what his return-to-school plans were like, how we'd be utilizing the building, making sure that he had all the information from facilities to know what they were going to be doing and not be able to do here in the school. During remote from March on, we, we had no contact with each other because we were so focused on trying to keep both of our systems moving forward. Prior to that, we had to cancel one meeting, but we did have a meeting or two between late fall and early, early winter. So, so I think COVID had a lot to play in that. We had a good meeting with Peter. You know, we're hopeful that that would be the amount that we would settle on. I do have other information that I was asked to retrieve relative to G-Bex that I'll share with the board prior to our, our budget work session. So I just want to say it was, I think COVID really got in the way of, of having the kind of communication that we wanted to be able to work forward.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Travis. Paul?
Thank you, Helen. So one issue that I just wanted to flag for our further discussion, and then I also had a question. And this is an issue that I brought up to Dr. Ryan once before too. And that's, you know, in terms of looking at what education's going to look like next year with regards to COVID. Obviously, none of us have a crystal ball. You know, hopefully, this will be behind us and we'll be able to have, you know, in-person education as, as we've, you know, come to know it, you know, this year excluded. But I, I really want us to be mindful of trying to find a way that we can be educating all of our students in person five days a week next year. And obviously, like I said, none of us have a crystal ball as to what the world's going to look like come next September. But this is the time to start creatively thinking about it. We have the time to creatively think about it. And while we're in the budgeting process, I, I think it behooves us to do that. So, you know, not expecting anyone to come up with the magic cure or to understand exactly what the world's going to look like come next August, September. I, I do think we ought to be creatively thinking about that to try and make that happen. So that's just something for our further discussion as we go through the process. The one question I had was, you know, as, as Dave Slifka and I looked at this with the administrators, one thing that we had noticed in both the CMS and the EHS portions was that the facilities portion was down slightly from both of those buildings. And both of the principals indicated a need to chuck in with Mr. Lister to make sure that he had the staffing he needed. It may have been some unfilled positions that we just weren't certain yet if those needed to be filled. So I just wanted to make sure those conversations took place and Mr. Lister's, you know, comfortable that this budget gives him what he needs to take care of facilities at both of those buildings.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions for Molly? Melissa?
Sorry. I don't know if there are questions for Molly, there were comments to the board about the budget. Are we doing that right now, Helen?
Well, what we're going to do, Melissa, is we're going to, at the end of the meeting, as we do with public input, we could save it for that if they're comments. What I'd like to do this evening is, if we have specific questions about line items, save those for our December 8th meeting and also for the hearing on the budget, which is in January. But I, but I welcome the comments. I would just, if you could hold them until we get to that public input part of our session, that would be helpful.
So the comments on the budget saved till public input?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Before we move on, what I want to do, I want to thank our Budget Advisory Committee. I want to thank Molly and Michelle for all of your hard work. Paul and Dave for representing the board. At some of these sessions and Melissa for representing the board as on our Budget Advisory Committee. Dave Pendel and your, your group, great job. We appreciate it. And we'll look forward to discussing this even further on December 8th. Our building administrators, fine job. I know that wasn't an easy task for you. Thank you. All right then, we are going to move on, but in the meanwhile, I'm going to, if our administrators would like to take. What normally might be an early evening. Not so much tonight. Please feel free to leave us if you want. We only have a couple of more items to. Cover and then we will be going into non-public on a couple of issues. So. Feel free this evening. Thank you so much, everybody and have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you for your time. Great. Alrighty, we are going to move on to facilities. Mr. Bauer, we had quite the interesting meeting tonight. It was great. If you want to report out for us, please.
We did. Thank you, Helen. I'm really excited about the meeting we had tonight, but I am going to try and be brief, understanding it's, you know, after 9:30 already. We had two agenda items that we discussed. First, we were fortunate enough to. Hear from a ninth grader at Exeter High School, Camille Weber. Who presented to us on some research that she's done. Into adding solar panels to the array at Exeter High School. And this is a project that she had started to do while she was at CMS with Mr. Maycomer. And, you know, as she put it, she started doing it for a grade and it became much more than that. So she's done a lot of research into, into this, you know. Going into the, the cost savings that the co-op could see over time if we were to expand our use of solar energy. Locations, the panels could be put. So what I'd like to do is she did give us a written presentation. That I'm going to append to the facilities minutes that I'm going to put together and I'd share those with, with all the board members so that they can see. All of Camille's hard work and it's something that we're certainly going to follow up on with Mr. Lister. To, to see if this is something that we can continue to see if it's something that would be right to do at the high school. The other agenda item was, you know, our standing item, the CMS project. I last week had the pleasure of going to, to tour CMS to see the status of the construction. And I was just blown away. They're making such progress there. It was awesome to see. The cafeteria demo is, is, you know, done. It, it's ready to, you know, for the construction to begin there. The construction of the new kitchen has begun. I walked through what will be the new kitchen. I stood in the new multipurpose room. I got to walk through the two new pods. You know, one of them actually starting to look like a pod. They've got the structure up. It's really exciting to see it come to fruition and know that we're going to have kids, you know, being educated in those areas. Come next academic year. And, and the good news is, you know, while we can't take it as a guarantee, I don't think quite yet, simply because with construction, you know, you never know when, when issues could arise, but. It's looking like we're really on a good path to have this project done. By the time our students are setting foot in the building next year, including the cafeteria, you know, with the exception of the second elevator. But it, things are looking real good timing wise on the project. We remain within the contingency within budget. So it's just so exciting to see and I'm really glad to see the progress.
Thank you, Paul. And I echo your comments about Camille, what a job she did. I think we were all blown away by. This ninth grader, the research that she did on this was incredible and I think. Dr. Ryan even compared her to some of his college students in terms of what a great job she did relative to some of them. So. We look forward to hearing more about this and hopefully pursuing it. Any questions for Paul or for Rusty? Yes, Travis?
Not so much a question, Helen, but just a, a comment and a kudos. So about a year ago, Mr. Maycomber and Camille reached out to me because they weren't sure who to talk to. And he, he knew my name from, from somewhere, which is not always a good thing, but in this case it was. And after talking to Dr. Ryan, you know, I directed them to, to Dick Wendell and Rusty and kudos to both of them. My understanding, they immediately were, were all over it, thrilled to, to work with a student and have a conversation with them and. Mr. Maycomber reached out to me to say how thrilled Camille was with the, just the ability to talk to those individuals. So just a. Big kudos to Rusty and Dick Wendell for, you know, more than willing to, to help one of our students with a, at the time of project and now it sounds like a passion. So. Really exciting to hear that that's coming to, you know, to, to a really neat conclusion and hopefully something we can actually support. Doing something here in the, in the future, but Paul, thanks for sharing that story and kudos to Rusty and Dick.
Thank you, Travis. Rusty, we are blessed to have you with us, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, if there are no further questions for Paul, Melissa, do you have anything you wanted to report out on, on finance in addition to what we've already heard from Molly?
Um, I actually do of all nights. I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's good.
I feel like I'm, I'm kind of stealing your thunder, Molly, because she's good. Do you want, I don't mind telling it, but it's all good and you did it. Are you sure you don't want to tell? Yeah, okay. All right. So as of right now. As of today, the unreserved fund balance is 4.2 million, which is in your packet. But we're going to have another 555,800 added into it, which will bring us to about 4.8 million. And that is coming from the Supplemental Public School Response Fund. And Molly did an amazing job. She shared with us, I believe it was she, well, it was she, I heard Michelle. You said all of the secretaries helped, right? Rusty, it was, it was a big team effort. But they scrubbed through all the budgets to find out what we could be reversed for. It had to be something specific to COVID. And it could not have been something that was already in the budget. You know, so for example, for PPE, cleaning supplies and that sort of thing. And some of the ionization, or the ionization system, we are getting back 476,711. And then the technology that we had to purchase to give out to the teachers for the remote learning. We're going to get 138,000 back.
Wow.
Even, yeah, even regarding. Regarding Cookson, the, the PR firm, 19,447 will be coming back to us for that. We had hired them to help us with, to support COVID-19 communications. And Molly just told some really neat stories where even getting through this, right? The pink paper that they needed to go ahead and, and label, I'm assuming like hallways or something, but to label different things, right? You even were able to subtract that from the budget.
Yeah. Can I just correct you on one thing also though? So. We were given the 555,800 and we had to justify that we would expend all of that before December 30th, not December 31st, but December 30th. And so we scrubbed the budget and pulled everything that we knew we spent money on, from the pink paper to the ionization machines, to the masks. Everything we could think of with the help of Rusty's team and Denise and the secretaries at all the schools. And things we purchased at the end of last year to support remote learning, like the teacher computers. And we justified that. So that money was put into our bank account last week, I think it was. And if we did not spend that by December 30th, we would have to give that back. And so we've collected all the receipts, all the purchase orders to justify that we did spend that money. And I believe it's 124,000 we actually spent over that, which will be going to a webinar on Friday. To seek additional reimbursement for that. So. All of the items that Melissa listed are not necessarily guaranteed, but we do have the 550,000 in the bank now. And we'll be seeking the additional 124,000, I think it is. I put it in, put it away. And then if there's any other costs that we can. Think of that will happen before December 30th. Again, it has to be only cost up through December 30th and it's anything that you have to purchase. It has to be operational by December 30th.
Thanks, Molly. Thanks, Melissa. Do you have any, anything else you want to add, Melissa?
I do want to say though, that Molly didn't give herself any district enough credit. Because she did further tell us that a lot of the other schools, right? They didn't order their HVAC systems, if I heard you correctly, in time. It had to be something that was on the premises. Prior to what is it, the first or the 30th of December? So other schools didn't get the reimbursement. You did a good job. You need to take a little credit, Molly. She did, they all did really good. So thank you. And that's it for the financial report, Helen.
Thanks, Melissa. Are there any questions for Melissa or Molly on finances? All right then. Very good. We're going to move to public input. We'll open the chat box, but these are for comments only as normally we would do for public input. As I said, if you have specific questions with regard to. The budget, if you want to send them to us, we can talk about those at our December 8th. Workshop or at the budget hearing. And if you have any questions for the administration with regard to the school opening. Please direct your questions to them. Melissa, would you like to? Share those comments that you, you had earlier that we said we would save for this part and then perhaps Dr. Ryan could open the chat box when you're ready, sir? Thank you.
It is open now. Thank you.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. You're funny, like funny ironic, but as I was sitting here and I was kind of beating myself up over this because I was thinking how. Being on the budget, being the representative on the Budget Advisory Committee, I know they like to get feedback. From the board, right? I should be going back and forth between the two, just sharing. And I know, I didn't feel like it happened last year and I felt like it didn't really feel like it happened this year. And then it occurred to me that they meet weekly and we meet monthly and there's kind of a disconnect there. Because I think they're meeting weekly and they're going right along and they're feeling like, oh, the board probably is on the same page. But we don't necessarily know that because they're, they're done. Our last meeting, they only had an orientation, you know? But so a couple of things, a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up, I'm just asking that the board, keep it in mind because you're probably going to be looking at your packet before the next meeting. And that is this 2.13% increase that we're looking at. I, I don't disagree that it's a great number, but typically within that increase, we would see an increase. In salaries and as you're all aware, we are negotiating right now a contract for 250 people. So all of those salary increases are going to be on a separate article. So that does. Adversely impact that 2.13%. And then I also just want to throw out there that I'm hoping. I'm hoping that we do take a look at benefits as we go through that because we know that that's a crucial expense. And then I just wanted to mention a concern I had with GVECs, even though it's going in the right direction. In putting a number per student of 2500 that does concern me because I don't know. I don't know that I feel like it's equitable because. Any student that goes to a different school, they are not receiving 2500 from SU-16. So I know that we've had other, we've had constituents come to us and say, you know, look, there's an RSA where my child is going to a private school. And I can't even remember what the title of it was now, but it was for the extra services, whether it be PE or guidance or that sort of thing, nurse. They were asking us to give some type of a payment and, and I know that on some of our boards, we've denied that. So. I do have a concern because I almost feel as though it looks as though we're paying some type of tuition. And I don't know that we mean for it to look that way. And then lastly is the DEIJ position. And I think Travis had mentioned that too. I'm not completely comfortable with it in the co-op budget. I think technically if the board were to approve that position. My thought is just that maybe similar to the Medicaid director, that that money should be dispersed. You know, percentage wise into each individual town budget. That being said, I don't know that this is a time to implement such a position. And I noticed on the final page of the budget, it lists this position, you know, it says, i- i- in the presentation, it's, there is full disclosure, the position is 112,000. Position, but in that final page, it says 11,000. And I think that's really a difference between maybe other positions we had or something. This position isn't really an 11,000 budget, it's 112,000 budget. So. Those were just, those were just some concerns that I had.
Thank you, Melissa. We have. Two comments. One is a question. And one is a comment. Liz Frier is asking to please put the co-op budget in the form or format. As a comment and her question is, do we have two Medicaid directors?
So the answer to the old format, and I'll have to double check, but I believe that the old format is only. Fund 10, which is your general fund. And so that does not give you the complete picture was put on the ballot. The ballot is the entire cooperative. And so that's why we printed this. So you have the entire picture of what, that would tie to the number on the ballot. So I believe the old format is just the Fund 10 format, but again, it's the exact same numbers. It's just the entire budget.
Thanks, Molly.
And in regards to the two Medicaid coordinators, no, we don't. It was. That person's an SAU employee, so they're billed out to the cooperative. So it's not only the increase in salary that you see online, it's the increase in benefits too. So it's the entire package of that individual, not just salary.
Thank you, Molly. We have a comment from Sarah Cross to all panelists. Thank you for all the time and energy you are putting into these discussions. I am both a parent and a teacher in this district. My son is a third grader at Lincoln Street School and my daughter is a sixth grader at CMS. And I am a teacher at EHS. My husband is a teacher in another New Hampshire district. We are missing our classrooms tremendously. I need to take this opportunity to speak for my students. And for my colleagues. The January 19th return date for the high school makes sense. This will allow for a complete first semester. CMS is returning to school at the start of a new trimester. And the high school needs that same scheduled persistency. Thank you, Sarah. I see no other comments in the chat box, so. Public input is at a close. I have no other older new business. As I said, I'm going to save my report on the Superintendent Evaluation Committee for December. As we do have to discuss a couple of items in non-public, hopefully this will not take long. So I'm going to ask to move into non-public under. New Hampshire RSA 91-a32ACND. Do I have a motion to move into non-public?
So moved, Helen. Kimberly.
Thank you, Kim. And Bob, would you like to second that?
Yes.
All right. I'll poll the board. I'm an aye. Bob?
Aye.
Rust, I'm not Rusty, sorry. I see Rusty there. Paul?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. Could we, would you, would you like a five minute break? Or do you want to keep going?
Let's go.
Let's go.
All right.